Uh, we will still resume Ephesians five twenty-eight to twenty-nine. But we will zero in on the argument on what it means to love one's wife. So here is the, here are the verses. Uh, this is what, these are the verses that we will focus on tonight. Uh, Ephesians five twenty-eight to twenty-nine, it reads. So husbands ought also to love their own wives as their own bodies. He who loves his wife, uh, he who loves his own wife loves himself. For no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it. Just as Christ also does the church. Now, we noted last week the importance and the great emphasis the Apostle Paul makes on the commandment or the responsibility of husbands to love their wives. Now, we saw how this was an emphasis by the Apostle Paul because he repeats this more than once. So in Ephesians five, he first gives this directive. In verse twenty-five, when he says husbands love your wives just as Christ also loved the church. And after explaining how husbands are to pattern their love for their wives according to Christ's love for the church. The Apostle Paul repeats the command again in verse twenty-eight. So husbands also to ought also to love their own wives. And we made the point last week that this teaches us that a husband's love for his wife plays an eminent role to domestic godliness. Oftentimes, this is where uh, domestic godliness stands or falls. A husband's love for his wife and how that should uh, impact the rest of the home. And so we, we see that it is very crucial in our efforts to build a godly home that we will focus on this important responsibility. And we saw that verse twenty-nine shows us that this love will be expressed in its uh, it, it will be expressed uh, by its uh, efforts to nourish and cherish his wife. Uh, we see that verse twenty-nine, for no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it. And the Apostle Paul brings that back to Christ's example. Christ also does the church. He nourishes and cherishes the church. And so this teaches us that domestic godliness is built through the material of the husband's love for his wife. And how that should also be a virtue exercised by every family member of the home. So that's just a, a, a sweeping summary of what we studied last week. And as I, I said earlier, uh, we're still focusing on these two verses, right? We're still here. But uh, the author in the section that I posted in our group chat zeroes in on the argument that it is done uh, with the rationale of one's self-love. Right? One's self-love. Notice, and now it's in underline. Notice, it says husbands all ought also to love their own wives as their own bodies. And then it says, he who loves his own wife loves himself. Alright, so you see the argument that the Apostle Paul is making here by the inspiration of the Holy Spirit? That a husband's care and love for his wife is uh, 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 reasoned according to his own care for his own body. His though, his efforts to nourish his body, to cherish his body, not to hate his own body. And even to love himself. He who loves his own wife loves himself. And so the Apostle Paul focuses on a person's natural love and natural affection for himself. And he argues, love your wife because no one has ever hated his own self. Because she is, you are joined to her. So if you love her, you also love your own self. As you would care for your body and not hate your body, you also ought to care for your wife and not hate your wife. And so the, the focus of the, the author is to explain what that means. Right? The place of uh, a man's natural love and affection to himself. Right? Self-love, in other words. The Apostle Paul uses one's own love for himself, one's own love for oneself as a motive and even an argument to love their wife. Right? You, you, you see the, the focus here? So it's on the place for affection and love for one's self, right? Now, we, we need to treat this topic carefully because and if there's anything that describes our day, it is a perverse view, a twisted view of self-love. And the author is aware of that and he will deal with it. So let's look, alright? Let's look. How can, we have to answer, ask the question. How can I love my wife as I love myself? Or make my own care and love for my body as a pattern to follow and to determine how I am to love my wife? How can I do that in a God-honoring way? So the first thing the author notes of a man's natural affections to himself is love for self is lawful, alright? Love for self is lawful. Love for self is not immediately sinful. It could be, and oftentimes it becomes sinful, as I will this, uh, I will explain later according to the author's um, explanation. Uh, but let us remember that we should not automatically, automatically assume that it is a sinful act. There is a sound and holy love for oneself that is encouraged even in the scriptures, right? And the first place the author goes to is the second commandment. Alright, I hope you are familiar with the second commandment. Uh, in its context, Matthew twenty-two, uh, some uh, a religious authority, a lawyer tried to test Christ and asked him what the first and greatest commandment is. And when the Lord, and the Lord answered by saying that the first and greatest commandment is to love God with your mind, soul, strength, basically with your all, love God with your all and above all. But the Lord also included the second commandment that is like it. And that is Matthew twenty-two thirty-nine, and the second is like it. He says, the Lord Jesus says, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. So notice that the Lord argues for one's love for his neighbor by showing that one, a person loves himself. Now, uh, just to clarify, that's not a commandment to love oneself. Some people interpret that to mean that it's a third commandment. Right? Love yourself, you know, love your neighbor as yourself. No. The Lord assumes that the person loves, a person loves himself. Right? And therefore, because of how universal and even natural it is for one to love himself, he makes that argument, love your neighbor the way you love yourself, the way you care for yourself, the, the way you nourish yourself. The Lord doesn't say repent of your love for self in, in this particular context, right? Showing that there is a proper place for love for self. Again, it will be clearer as we go along what that looks like in a holy way. So he also points out, the author, C. William Goudge, that uh, the prophets, apostles, and the Savior himself taught this. Uh, he, some of his references, Leviticus nineteen, uh, eighteen. Uh, it's actually where Christ quoted the second commandment. You shall not take vengeance and you shall not keep your anger against the sons of your people, but you shall love your neighbor as yourself. I am the Lord. And the apostles also, uh, quoted this, James two, verse eight. If however, you are fulfilling the royal law according to the scriptures, the scripture, you shall love your neighbor as yourself, right? And so of course, the royal law, that James is clear, is referring to the royal law reflected in Leviticus, uh, nineteen eighteen. You shall love your neighbor as yourself. He quoted it. And so showing that th- there is a lawful sense where a person should, uh, could rather, love himself. Matthew seven, verse twelve, the Lord Jesus says, therefore in all things, whatever you want people to do for you, so do for them, for this is the law and the prophets. So the, the author explains this or summarizes this in two ways, right? In two ways. First, and this is the, these are the author's words. Natural affection was at first created of God, by Him planted in man. So that a soul, body, the powers and parts of them are in their substance. Good things, this affection also in itself is good, right? A person, uh, the, the point here is this natural affection was first created of God. Right? When God even prior to the fall, uh, gave um, uh, man all that he needs, Adam and Eve. He even gave Adam all the trees except the, the forbidden tree and the forbidden fruit to freely eat of. And he can do that with n- not just enjoyment, but even with the intention of doing good to oneself. And the Lord gave Adam what was needful for him, his wife, C. Eve, because it was not good for man to be alone. And so God, uh, clearly, uh, shows that caring for oneself is not wrong. Alright, number two, by way of summary, there are the same reasons to love ourselves as our brethren. And he says, for we ourselves are made after God's image, redeemed by Christ's blood, members of the same mi- mythical body or mystical body, keepers of ourselves to give an account of the good or hurt we do to ourselves with the like. In the law, under this word, neighbor, ourselves are comprised, meaning you shall love your neighbor. And every commandment of the second tablet is to be applied to ourselves. And so he is saying here that the uh, call to love our neighbor and care for our neighbor according to God's law applies to how we should also care for ourselves. Right? So the, the, the point langit here is this is a, i- this is part of being an image bearer. So do not automatically assume that one's love for self is wrong, right? It could get wrong, but it is not automatically wrong. Uh, for those who came, who just came in, um, you might be wondering why this is what we're talking about. Alright, it is because in Ephesians five twenty-eight to twenty-nine, when the husbands are commanded to love their wives, one of the rationales the Apostle Paul puts forward is love for self. Care for your own body, you don't hate it, you nourish and cherish it. And he who loves his own wife loves himself. And so we're studying now how that should inform how we love our wives. One's own love for self. And so the author continues, alright, of natural self-love, alright? Now here, he makes this very clear, alright? There is a sense where being a lover of self is condemned. Right? Being a lover of self is condemned. So there are clear biblical, um, uh, warnings against self-love. Let me just, uh, uh, now, now here the author is acknowledging, you know, that though it is lawful, it could be perverted. Alright, so though loving oneself is lawful, it could be perverted. And the scriptures clearly show how this could be perverted. Second Timothy, chapter three, verse two, describing what our, the last days will be like. And the, the verse begins by saying, men will be lovers of self. Right? So that's one characteristic of the condition of man during the last days. He is a lover of self, and that is said in a, in a sinful, in the, in the sinful sense of love for self. Another one, Philippians two twenty-one. This is, uh, making contrast, a contrast between Timothy, who truly cared for the church in Philippi, and those who did not. And it says in Philippians two twenty-one, for tho- about those who did not care for them, for they all seek after their own interests, not those of Christ Jesus. So that's another expression of sinful self-love. Seeking one's own interest and not the interest of Christ. First Corinthians ten twenty-three to twenty-four, and this is said in the context of um, giving up one's personal liberty for the sake of the brother. And it says, all things are lawful, but not all things are profitable. All things are lawful, but not all things build up. And then the Apostle Paul says, let no one seek his own good, but that of the other person. Again, the opposite of being a seeker of one's own interest or being a lover of self. Romans fifteen, verse one, now we who are strong ought to bear the weaknesses of those without strength and note, and not just please ourselves. Uh, in the Greek, the, the word behind just is not there, that's supplied by the, by the translators, Romans fifteen, verse one. And so it's literally, and uh, without strength and please ourselves. So let us not please ourselves as we try to be understanding. And this is said in the context of those with weaker conscience. Not just thinking of what you can handle and what is allowable for you. You have to be conscious of all the, the rest in the church. And so this is, uh, this is clearly taught in scriptures that self-love, though natural and part of what it means to be an image bearer, could get perverted. And it could become sinful. But it's important that we need to make a distinction, right? There is a distinction. There is good and commendable self-love, and there is evil and damnable self-love. So the author now will begin by showing what commendable love of, uh, love for self looks like. And he categorizes that in two ways. So there's the natural. Under natural, this is true of everyone, even if a person is not Christian. And then there is spiritual, special for those who are recipients of God's redeeming work. So the, of, of natural self-love, alright? The, the first thing the author says is self-love as an in- instinct of nature. That's what he says. And, and it, it speaks about how God gave us a natural love for self as part of even our natural instinct to care for ourselves. And that's not necessarily wrong, the auth- the author argues. Um, let me quote him. The author says, that which is natural is in all by the very instinct of nature, and it was at first created and still is by God's providence preserved in our nature. And that for the preservation of nature or the preservation of ourselves. So here, the author says that when a person has this, uh, and again, this is true for for everyone, although this could also be perverted, but this is true even for non-believers. That instinctively, we would like to care for ourselves. Instinctively, we would like to do what is good for ourselves, even when, uh, uh, people are unbelievers, they, they want to exercise. Many, we, we see many unbelievers wanting to exercise. It's healthy, uh, you know, earn well, um, pass on to their children what is nice and good. Uh, these are all connected to this natural self-love. And again, I know, not necessarily sinful, although oftentimes it goes there. And so this natural self-love is not something we need, we ought to take out. Especially for Christians, it should be sanctified and serve a greater purpose than just self-preservation. Mainly to glorify God in our care for ourselves. But this is something God gave, uh, to humanity as part of being image bearers. It is one of the blessings of common grace that uh, society has this instinctive nature to preserve oneself. It's one of God's blessing and common grace. That it is unnatural, though it happens, it is still shocking and unnatural when people try to take their life or try to take the lives of others or put others' lives at risk, right? And in common grace, God teaches that through government, through laws, through education, et cetera. That makes us aware. And so this is true. There is this natural self-love that we have. And this natural love for self is seen in our love to those linked to us. Now this one, this is unique to me, alright? This is the first time I thought of this when I studied this chapter. That it is true, no? Those who are most linked to you, like relationally, alright? Is a reflection of one's love for self, right? Uh, for example, um, your own children, you will have a natural love for them, alright? Because of their link to you. They have a link to you. They are your children. Or for example, the author also points out to your parents. Right? There is a natural love for one's parents, and that is a re- reflection of one's love for self. It could even be a healthy kind, where you care for them, because you know that they are linked to you, they are your own. This also extends to one's relatives and close alliances. Uh, there is this love for them because of their link to you. And that's not condemned necessarily, although that could be perverted, but that's not necessarily condemned. In fact, the scriptures condemns, uh, a person who does not care for his own family. Uh, Paul told this to Timothy, that this person who does not care for his own family is worse than an unbeliever. And that the, the care there is in the context of, um, pro- providing for one's family. And so this is part of self-love, this natural self-love. Right? So let's have some considerations for what this means for domestic godliness, right? So having defined this, um, allowable self-love, this natural self-love, right? When we say, alright, when we, let's go back to that verse so that we're, we're anchored to the main text. So when we say husbands also, uh, husbands ought also to love their own wives as their own bodies. He who loves his own wife loves himself, right? When we speak about that one's love for self. Because self-love includes this natural self-love, this means, now first consideration, the husband should care for the practical and natural needs of the home, right? This is not condemned, alright? And this is not less spiritual when a husband cares for what is needed in the home. What is even, uh, uh, co- uh, what, what, what would make the home conducive for living and domestic godliness, right? So do not think that, uh, when we talk about building a godly home, that we are not thinking of the, the practical work we have to put into to make the home, right, uh, honorable to God. Of course, it is beyond this, as we will see, but it does not forego this, right? So a husband who will say, na, sige, we, I won't work so that we will just have Bible studies every day and kamunay bahala, kayo na bahala, or what you will eat. Uh, I won't care for what you will eat, basta lang maka Bible studyta. Uh, anyways, uh, man does not live by bread alone, but by every word that proceeds from God's mouth, and so you don't need bread. Uh, that's not, that, that, that is not right, right? In fact, Paul's argument in Ephesians five is we don't even treat our bodies that way, right? We even naturally feed ourselves when we're hungry and, and when, when we're thinking well, we even feed ourselves with what's good for our bodies. So the domestic godliness should include that. The husband should strive to make the home orderly and good, right? Of course, uh, with his helpmate, the wife being the helpmate, um, who is mostly involved in the affairs of the home. But even for the rest of the family members, right? So of course husbands take lead in doing this. But of course, the wife, as she follows the husband's lead and the children, according to your ability, age, and responsibility given to you by your parents, right? Do not detach this from domestic godliness, right? That's why it, uh, it bothers me when some young men, in the name of growing, uh, spiritually or wanting to be active in church, neglect the important, basic responsibilities of the home, right? They're so active helping people in church, but they're not even willing to carry, uh, uh, something heavy for the home. Because na busy sa church. That, that is not, you know, domestic godliness. Do not think that you are, uh, honoring God when you willfully, right, neglect the home in the name of service to God. Even, Christ even condemned that of the religi- religious leaders. When there were those who were obligated to honor their parents, but they created a, a rule, korban. Now what is given to my parents, I will give it nalang to, uh, for religious purposes. No, this is included, right? So that's the first, alright, in our considerations of building a godly home. That even instills honor, that even instills dignity in the practical affairs of the home. No, it, there is dignity there. It's not, uh, it is not something, uh, that is debased, no? Practical, natural needs of the home. Now, of spiritual love for self, so I hope you're following, alright? Uh, the, so we defined, uh, uh, lawful self-love as something that includes one's natural love for self. Now we look at spiritual self-love. Now, this is distinguished from natural self-love because for spiritual self-love, this is a result of God's work in a person's life. This is true for all those who are Christians. And therefore, this spiritual self-love is a result of God's spirit by the work of God, the Holy Spirit. This, this spiritual self-love is owing to the regeneration of God's spirit. And therefore, this makes spiritual self-love unique for those who are Christians. And so the author points out that those who have spiritual self-love have been enlightened to what's ultimately good. Right? They have been enlightened to what's ultimately good. This is not just natural self-love, right? Like practical self-love. But this is a kind of love for oneself that is informed by the word of God. That shows us what we ultimately need, which is the ultimate need being spiritual, right? So this is, uh, what, this, this reflects what Christ says, uh, in the call to discipleship. The, the author doesn't go here, but I think this is a fitting verse for that. Matthew sixteen, if you guys can go there, it's not on the screen. When the Lord Jesus, uh, explained what it means to be a follower of his, uh, he says, um, Matthew sixteen, verse twenty-four and onwards. Then Jesus said to his disciples, if anyone wishes to come after me, let him deny himself, take up his cross and follow me. For whoever wishes to save his life will lose it, but whoever loses his life for my sake will find it. For what will it profit a man if he gains the whole world and forfeits his soul? Or what will a man give in exchange for his soul? Now notice here that the Savior is not teaching, right, com- uh, utter self-denial, right? Utter meaning complete, uh, absolute self-denial. Utter meaning complete uh absolute self-denial, right? Because he is arguing for what will make you uh possess your soul. You won't lose your soul, you won't forfeit your soul. So there should be a care for one's soul. You don't hate your soul by uh doing what is harmful to your soul. That's a spiritual self-love, right? You're doing what is good for you spiritually. And so this spiritual self-love is even willing, now here's where it gets profound. Even willing to suffer what is naturally good for you for the sake of what is greater, what is better for you, right? So you you get that, and that's even seen in Matthew sixteen. You so care and you are a good steward of the soul that God has given you, the life that God has given you, that there will be times that you will deny yourself what many times naturally feels good for you because you have been enlightened to what is better for you, right? And so this spiritual self-love is persuaded to even suffer for once of of your own good. Uh he gives examples of of the apostle Paul. Uh I'll just quote one. Paul says, first Corinthians nine twenty-seven, "I discipline my body and make it my slave so that after I have preached to others, I myself will not be disqualified." And in his discipline of his bodies, the apostle Paul, that certainly included disciplining himself to even at times deny to himself what would naturally feel good for the sake of not being disqualified, right? "I myself will not be disqualified," first Corinthians nine twenty-seven. So the author says, I quote, "For a covetous man, though he loved his money, yet he can be content to part with it for bread to nourish his body." So he's giving a comparison between a covetous man and a spiritual man. And so he says first that a covetous man, uh he'd be willing to let go of his money, that he loves so much just to nourish his body. So he knows some self-denial, right? I'll let go of this so that I could eat. But that's not completely spiritual. The author says, "So a spiritual man, though he loves his life, yet he can be content to lose it for his soul's salvation. For he loves himself sufficiently, who doth his best to enjoy chiefest and truest good." So we ought to be persuaded, um bra- uh friends and and brethren, that spiritual love for oneself is knowing what is spiritually good, eternally good for you. And there will be times that you will have to forego many of the comforts or many of the things that are naturally attractive to you, right? For the sake of what is good for you, right? For the sake of what's good for you. And therefore, this is spiritual self-love, right? This is even the sense uh the 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 more at the heart of the kind of love we have to emulate and give to our wives. So application again, right? Some considerations. The first is the husband should have a spiritual love for his wife, right? I think that should be very clear. Um especially if you are, right, a Christian, you profess to be Christian, right? And if you uh claim to be a follower of Christ, right? Your love should primarily be a spiritual love for your wife. That means nourishing and care uh and cherishing your wife should have its uh a a spiritual, right, a spiritual um standard to it. Your greatest, the the greatest care you give to your wife is a care that is spiritual. Be specific, a love that helps them draw near to Christ more. A love that helps them understand and apply God's Word more in their lives. The kind of things you do with your wife, if you really love her with a spiritual love, will not be what does harm to her soul. You won't ex- expose her to things that will make her, uh will will tempt her to love the Savior less, right? If we care, now the this comes close to Ephesians five argument. If if we care for ourselves spiritually and we make sure that we don't stumble, we don't be exposed to temptation and we're abiding in Christ, we ought to do the same for our wife, right? And we have to have our minds renewed to this love, right? Because uh I mean, I think we we all know, no? With with uh loves, love movies, love songs these days. Uh a lot of uh the the way this world tries to influence us about what love for wife looks like. It's mostly just very emotional, very uh physical, very material, but not spiritual. And we have to remember that this is the kind of love God expects. Because, again, let's let's look at that verse. Because, look at verse twenty-nine, "For no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it." Because of this, end of verse twenty-nine, "Just as Christ also does the church." And Christ's love for the church is not just a natural type of love to give us the natural things of this world. And so second consideration, the husband should strive to make the home. Oops, sorry, this was the one earlier. Here we go, the husband should prioritize spiritual good over other things, right? Now here's what happens. Di ba, earlier I made a point, na, we have to uh we we should not forego the natural things that we have to do for the home. But there are times when we have to do that for the sake of the greater good, for the sake of the greater good. There are times when we have to sacrifice what may be more natural to to the um preferences of those in the home because we want to point them to a greater need, right? And so of course, we have to wrestle with that and balance that in its application, but we need to prioritize this spiritual love. Now the author, the last part of this section uh shows us what this evil self-love is. It was already pointed out earlier, and here we will close. It was already pointed out earlier, na, self-love is not immediately unlawful, but oftentimes because of sin, self-love gets perverted. The verse in Timothy, that these last days, people will be lovers of themselves. So the author just quickly uh points out, how then do we know if it is already evil? Uh he he answers this two ways. Uh he says, "By knowing the object and the measure." That's that's his words, the object and the measure. In terms of the object, this is what he says, I will quote him and explain. "In the object, when it casts upon our corruptions, our lusts, our evil humors, when we affect and love them, and for them pursue what ever whatsoever may satisfy them, as the ambitious, lustful, riotous, gluttonous, and otherlike persons, this is expressly forbidden. Make no provision for the flesh to fulfill the lusts thereof," Romans thirteen fourteen. So how do we know if self-love is evil? When the object of that love, right, for self, is contrary to God's Word, right? If your love for self will mean indulging in what is contrary to God's Word, then that's obviously, alright, that's obviously an evil self-love. So if you say that uh I feel that uh uh myself, I've to care for myself, I need to to ha- uh to have that woman and and she's already married, that's so obvious, now that that's contrary to God's Word. Right? That's adultery and and that shouldn't be done. And a list of other sins that uh will show us clearly that it's already evil when the object of that self-love is contrary to God's Word. So it's um against God's Word, right? And that's the more obvious. But it's also evil self-love, the author says, "in the measure." Now when when what he says here, "in the measure," is when love is holy and only on our own. Right? What does that mean, holy and only on our own? He says that it it becomes evil when you're only seeking your own good, right? Because the uh the priority of scripture is to love our neighbor even at the expense of oneself, right? Even in the context of denying what you would have enjoyed by right. But because you love your neighbor, right, then you are willing to forego it. I hope each one here, you're, I hope you're part of a local church. And when I say part, I don't just mean, think attend mo, you're attending a church every Sunday. No, I mean, you're covenanted with a local church. And this is of, this is most expr- uh not most, but this is greatly expressed in the local church. When brothers may be bothered by your liberty. Um let's say you you feel that you can freely drink alcohol, but your brothers will be bothered by it. The scriptures clearly teach that you should be willing to forego it. And it becomes evil self-love when you do not care what it does to the others around you just because, you know, for yourself, it's okay. True love seeks the good of others. You read first Corinthians thirteen, it is very other-oriented. It prioritizes the good of others, not just one's own good, right? And so we have to be careful of the object of this self-love, if it is contrary to God's Word, and the measure. Are we willing, Philippians chapter two teaches us, are we willing to put the concerns of others above our own? So some considerations as we close, as we look at the reality that self-love could become evil and oftentimes it does, we should avoid perversions of love, and I should have said of self-love. We should avoid that because um yeah, again, this is the 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 stronger drift of society. They they make that the uh uh a thing to to accomplish, love yourself more, uh have more self-esteem, value yourself more, and oftentimes that becomes perverted. We should avoid that, because when we do that, we cannot really apply uh what the apostle Paul is saying about how we are to love our wife. We should not love our wife with a perverse type of love that does not prioritize what's spiritual. We should define our love according to truth. Now this one is very important. When we define self-love and when we say love your wife, because when you love your wife, you love yourself, and that includes the rest of the family members, that should not be emotionally culturally defined. It should be biblically defined, right? So your love for your family should be according to truth, right? So one example, and this is true for our culture, alright? What has Sunday become, uh in our culture? What is Sunday? One of the great competitions to Sunday being Lord's Day, it's not even the bounteous day or drinking day or uh partying day or what day. It's family day, right? Sunday is family day, and if you love your family, you will use Sunday for family. But that's not defining love according to truth. Sunday is the Lord's day. And the greatest expression of love for your family, if you're the head of the household and you're leading your home, is to take your family to church, because that is what's for their good, right? And so that's just one example, because culturally that's very real in our day. And therefore, we ought to define our love according to truth and according to God's standards, right? And therefore, let us remember that this, of course, primarily, the verse primarily applies to husbands. Love your wives, but that's supposed to be an example for the rest of the family members who are also expected to love one another with a spiritual kind of love. Okay, I'm two minutes over time. Um we'll we'll uh we'll we'll end with a word of prayer and then we can, I I could entertain questions if there are any. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for your word. We thank you, Lord, for the material that we can use, and we pray that you would use it for our good to renew our minds and to align us always to your truth. Father, we pray that you bless us and help us, Father, even as we get into the Q and A. In Jesus' name, amen. Alright, okay, so any questions or thoughts from the people? Okay. Alright. I checked my audio, and so I'm not missing anyone. Alright, so if there's no questions, then thank you for coming. I hope, I hope the Lord will sustain our schedule, because uh God willing, soon my my wife will be giving birth. And oh, there's still some uh, we're we're not sure, I'm not sure what, how how free I could be um compared to these days. But my goal, our our goal is to hopefully still be able to sustain our studies. Okay, so we'll we'll conclude the night. Good night, everyone. Bye-bye. Thank you, thank you, guys.